So, suppose you get to another world. What would you do there?
Hmm... I've always wondered why we're here, on this island. If there are any other worlds out there. Why did we end up on this one?
Good morning, Your Majesty! And stars to see on this one. What?
I've come to see the door to this world.
Huh?
This world has been connected.
Wha- what are you talking about?
Tied to the darkness. Soon to be completely eclipsed. You do not yet know what lies beyond the door. There is so very much to learn. You understand so little.
Oh yeah? Well, you'll see. I'm gonna get out and learn what's out there.
A meaningless effort. One who knows nothing can understand nothing.
I just can't wait. Once we set sail. It'll be great.
What could this mean?
It means... We'll just have to trust the King.
Gosh, I should hope he's alright.
Your Honor! Don't worry. We'll find the King and the stew.
Oh, and to chronicle your travels, he will accompany you.
Over here! Cricket's the name. Chimney Cricket at your service.
Hello there! Kind of got to watch out. I've got your back!
Where's Kyri? I thought she was with you.
The door... is open.
What?
The door is open, Sora. Now we can go to the outside world.
What are you talking about? We gotta find Kyri!
Kyri's coming with us. I'm not afraid of the darkness.
Riku? Kyri!
Sora...
Oh, a star's going out!
That's right, too!
Hey, you know, maybe we oughta go find Leon.
Oh... ah... huh? What a dream. Ah! This isn't a dream. Oh, where am I? Oh, boy.
What is going on, scouts? And we are back with more Kingdom Hearts Final Mix. We just arrived at Traverse Town. And I am going to try and make it to where it's a world for episode. Hopefully, it will work out that way. And let's go and find... What it is we're looking for. I have no money at the moment, so I can't buy anything. We just arrived at Traverse Town and... We're looking for Riku and Kyri, our friends. And Donald and Goofy are looking for Leon. And all them. It's a creature from the island. Doesn't look like he's here. Keep looking. I don't know if these guys are just endless, or if I can eventually hit it till they're all... No longer here. I think they're in the... So this is a good way to... Level up. Not here either. This could take a while. Yeah, the 99 cookies. I never had found them all before, but I got close to it. Okay, then. I'm glad you're gonna go down here. This part was always a pain for me, cuz I could never... Remember on where to go. Stuff I found of Kikichi no. Take another look around town. Okay, let's shop. I don't think I have anything. Well, only 170. That's what I thought. Not much.
They'll come at you out of nowhere.
Who are you?
And they'll keep on coming at you. As long as you continue to wield the Keyblade. But why? Why would it choose a kid like you?
Hey, what's that supposed to mean?
Never mind. Now, let's see that Keyblade.
What? There's no way you're getting this.
Alright. Then have it your way.
Now with this fight, it doesn't matter if you win or you lose. It's the same outcome.
No way I can lose.
No. Now you're gonna...
Aw, you're slipping, Leon.
I went easy on him. Looks like things are worse than we thought. A lot worse.
Sora. Free Kyri. Sorry.
Gosh, there's nobody here. Sure is spooky.
Of course, I'm not scared!
Excuse me, did the King send you?
Come on, lazy bum. Wake up! You okay?
Uh, I guess.
Those creatures that attacked you are after the Keyblade. But it's your heart they really want. Because you wielded the Keyblade.
I'm so glad that you're okay, Kyri.
Kyri? Who are you talking about? I'm the great Ninja Yuffie. I think you might have overdone it, Squall.
That's Leon.
The Keyblade?
Yeah. We had to get it away from you to shake off those creatures. It turns out, that's how they were tracking you.
It was the only way to conceal your heart from them. But it won't work for long. Still, hard to believe that you, of all people, are the chosen one. Well, I suppose beggars can't be choosers.
Why don't you start making sense? What's going on here?
Okay. You know there are many other worlds out there, besides your castle in this town, right?
But they're supposed to be a secret.
They've been secret, because they've never been connected. Until now. When the Heartless came... Everything changed.
The Heartless?
The ones who attacked you. You remember?
The those without hearts.
The darkness in people's hearts. That's what attracts them.
And there is darkness... Within every heart.
Hey, have you heard of someone named Ansem?
Ansem?
He was studying the Heartless. He recorded all of his findings in a very detailed report.
Gosh, oh, can we see it?
Its pages are scattered everywhere.
Scattered?
Too many worlds.
Oh, then maybe the King went to find them.
Yes. Those were my thoughts exactly.
We've gotta find them, quick!
Right! Happy Ninja King!
That's...
Let me just point out real quick. I've... Never noticed... Before, but Donald just broke the fourth wall. I'd never noticed that before any other time I played it, and I... Don't remember if he's done that throughout the series, or if this is just a one-time thing right here.
That's right. The Keyblade.
So, this is the key?
Exactly.
The Heartless have great fear of the Keyblade. That's why they'll keep coming after you, no matter what.
Well, I didn't ask for this.
The Keyblade chooses its master, and it chose you.
So, tough luck.
How did all this happen? I remember being in my room. Wait a minute! What happened to my home? My island? Riku? Kyri?
You know what? I really don't know.
I've heard that the Keyblade can open all sorts of locks. Give it a try the next time you find a treasure chest or door locked. Now what is it with this clock? Sooner or later, the Heartless will find you. You'd best prepare yourself. Prepare myself to fight for your life. Are you ready? I'm ready. Yuffie, let's go join Aerith. She should be there by now with the other visitors. Leon?
Yuffie, go!
Yuffie!
Sora, let's go!
Don't bother with the small fry. Find the leader. Let's go. There we go. Filled up on health.
Gosh, are these the Heartless guys?
Let's go get them!
Good job, guys. On the normal version, this guy is purple, black, and gray. Or maybe it's purple and black. I can't remember. But in the final mix version, they've recolored all the bosses.
So, you were looking for me?
Uh-huh.
They too have been seeking the wielder of the Keyblade.
Hey, why don't you come with us? We can go to other worlds on our vessel.
I wonder if I could find Riku and Kyri?
Of course!
Are you sure?
Who knows? But we need up the top races to help us find the King.
Sora, go with them. Especially if you wanna find your friends.
Yeah, I guess.
But you can't come along looking like that. Understand? No crying, no sad faces, okay?
Yeah, you gotta look funny, like us.
Yes, but ones on happy ones.
Happy?
Happy faces. Yay.
Yep! That's one funny face!
Okay, why not? I'll go with you guys.
Name's Goofy.
I'm Sora.
All for one, one for all!
That little squirt took down that Heartless. Could've thought it! Such is the power of the Keyblade. The child's strength is not his own.
Why don't we turn him into a Heartless? That'll settle things quick enough.
That'll settle things quick enough.
And the brats' friends are the King's lackeys! Slug on the eyes, they're all built rats by the look of them! Your new prize yourself!
Shut up!
Enough! The Keyblade has chosen him. Will it be he who conquers the darkness? Or will the darkness swallow him? Either way, he could be quite useful.
Make sure you're prepared for the journey ahead of you. We don't know how far the Heartless have spread. Check out the shops here. They've got some pretty neat stuff. This is from all of us. Yay, money, I can go shopping. Spend it as you see fit. And this is from Leon. Elixir. Good luck. I hope you find your friends. Oh, my Amazon Echo just answered me saying Elixir. That is funny. So if you, if you hear someone else talking in the background, that's what it is, is my Amazon Echo. Look out for each other. Keep your spirits up. The gummy ship is outside the gate. Yeah, I know it. I know all that. The what? That's our ship. Wait till you see it. Hold on. Sora, this is for you. Now you can use magic too. Goofy, give him that other thing. What? You know. Oh yeah. That's all. Abilities allow you to do all sorts of things. Guess we should look for mall along the way. Huh? Okay, is that it? Let's get going. Not till we're ready. Well, I see big adventures coming our way. Looks like it's up to me and to keep track of it all in my journal. Hey, look at this mark! Wonder what it is? So I believe right now, all I know is the Blue Trinity's. Not entirely sure on where they're all at either. Ah, yes, postcard. Okay, we'll give... One to Donald and one to Goofy. And not most people know this, but Donald... As I'm sure anyone who likes Kingdom Hearts or watch, is watching this... Knows that Donald gets a lot of crap for not healing whenever... Need be. But, you can also, what most people don't know is you can go in here... And... Set it... To defensive, and that will... Make it to where he does heal. Regular attacks frequently, occasionally, defensive magic which is... Uh... Healing. Healing magic, and then HP items. So, yeah, if you set that to this, then... He will heal. So we'll set him on defensive. Him, we will set to offensive, I think. Regular attacks constantly. Shield techniques tells how often the perf to perform defensive actions with the shield. Okay, tells how often to use abilities that support the party and consume MP. Reshoring items and MP items will just do... To use MP reshoring items. Only in emergency. So yeah, now Donald should... Heal just fine. And if anyone knows... On the locations of all the other postcards, I don't think I've ever collected all of them. Donald's stuck up here, because he doesn't know how to jump. That is... One funny thing is that... Sometimes... The AIs will just... Do crazy stuff. Now I've had to remember to come back and get that chest. I am gonna go to Merlin's place right now. Actually, first I'm gonna go back here and get this Blue Trinity. Then go to Merlin's place.
See ya!
Ooh, I almost didn't make that one.
There's something about this musty place. It reminds me of the secret place back home. Where we used to scribble on the walls. Remember?
Good.
Kyrie?
Sora?
Like I said in my previous video, I'm hoping to play through all these Kingdom Hearts games... By the time... Kingdom Hearts 3 comes out, then I will do, definitely do a let's play of that one. Even worse than I expected. And hopefully I'll have more better editing equipment... By the time Kingdom Hearts 3 comes out.
What? You knew we were coming? Of course! Are you a Heartless? He doesn't look like one. Oh, my no. My name is Merlin. As you can see, I am a sorcerer. I spend much of my time traveling. It's good to be home. Your king has requested my help. King Mookie? Yes, indeed. Donald, Goofy, and who might you be, young man?
I'm Sora.
Ah, so, you have found the key. What did the king ask you to do?
Just a moment. Trust that. Oh, there's a Blue Trinity here. Now I think I'll... Remember that. There now.
Your king asked me to train you in the art of magic. We can start anytime you like. Let me know when you're ready to begin the training. Oh, and one more thing. Hello, I'm the fairy godmother. Your king asked me to help you, help too. I will assist throughout your journey. I do not know how much I can be of help, but do stop by anytime.
Now I have any pages yet, so he... Does not have the Winnie the Pooh book. Let's go ahead, leave. Though I thought I had a... A summon this first time. Ah. I didn't think so. Alright. Nice toasty fire. Oh wait, I almost forgot. That chest I said I was gonna remember to get earlier. Straight ahead. If I can get it, I'm not sure I can get it right now. I think I have to wait. Yeah, I think I have to wait. Yep, I can't get to it. I can't get to that one. Okay. Ah, the postcard. The Heartless are always in the second and third district, they're never here in the first one. Okay, mega potion. I have a tutorial on how to do this. Alright. So... I do believe, this one is Alice in Wonderland, and this one is Hercules. Level 1 and level 2. So... I will try and open up both pathways, now. Hopefully I got time to do that. Or I can, I'll do that in my next video. Um, let me know in the comments below... If... Which world you want me to visit first, like I said, I think this one's on Alice in Wonderland, and then this one is Hercules. Let me know in the comments below which one to go to first. I will probably go for... This one up here, because it's level 1. Being the easiest. So if you, if you guys liked it, hit that like button. And if you want, you can subscribe. But your views is enough for me. Hope you all enjoyed. And there will be... More videos to come. And I will see you, in the next one. See you later guys!